I would like to call to order the Safety and Security Meeting for Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we convene the Tuesday, May 2nd Safety Committee Meeting.
Okay. And approval of the agenda, can I get an approval of the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda for the Tuesday, May 2nd Safety Committee Meeting.
All right, so today, how we're going to go about this is, one, we have all of our, most of our committee here, except for a few people, and like I said, I have questions from them, and so we're going to let Mr. Anderson come up and go ahead and give us a presentation, and then after that, I know that we have some principals here who may have some questions, and then I have some questions from committee members, and then any of the committee members who also have questions, if you guys will direct those questions to Mr. Anderson. Thanks, Will.
Thank you, Ms. Nash, and thank you for all being here. As I've probably mentioned before, I had the pleasure of working with a lot of great people, and so they liked me to be the voice at times, but I'm just here as a voice for a lot of people in the room. Mr. Mark Claxton, who's on y'all's committee, as integral parts, well as his team, LaDea Williams and Dwayne Robinson, and as well as our school principals that are here, thank them very much for being here. They've had a busy day, and they've come here, and we had a good discussion earlier today as we continue to collaborate and try to work on providing safe schools for our high schools and for all our schools. As you mentioned, your committee, your meeting today is a one-adjourned item, and that's our metal detector plan. And so, wanted to share with you all some information about, first, some data to show what's been going on with our pop-ups, and then provide our kind of high-level overview of our plan, some of the cost associated with the plan, a recommendation for a policy for the school board to take up as part of the plan, and then the timeline for implementing this, and of course, have a, this is a committee meeting, so have a discussion. So, real quick, since February 2nd, when we started upping our pop-ups, we've done a total of 26 random screenings. These are randomly selected. Mr. Claxton's team puts them in a computer generator, and it pops up. 21,796 students have been screened. We have found, findings include a one weapon, one gun, a taser, pocket knife, screwdriver, half pair of scissors, sharp-edge weapon, and then we've had nine keychain mace, as well as vapes, drugs, marijuana, and alcohol. Staffing these has taken up 241 school personnel, 111 contracted security, and 181 Richland II officers. And as you can see there, direct cost, which we can directly get billed and invoice for is $21,005 for those security off, contracted officers. The indirect cost, which we work through those pricing now, is those school staff that are doing extra duties, SROs, and district security staffing. These are just some images from the detection. Some of these are images that might have been earlier on, like we just got set up, so we're ready to roll, but you can see yellow shirt vest, high visibility. You can see images of school staff in that middle bottom picture. You can see the well-dressed Mark Sims checking a bag there, as he always is. So, it's a lot of work to get these up and running, but it's been a, every time we've done this process, it's gotten better. I mentioned to Mr. Jackson at Westwood High School today that when we first started this at Westwood, the amount of the alarms were going off has since now cut in half, and that's due to kids knowing, knowing to be prepared of what to walk through an alarm, just the same way as you go to the airport. The more and more you go to the airport, you know the steps you have to take. So, we're getting better as we do this. And so, our plan, we are working right now, and I'll talk more about the timeline, to implement metal detectors every single day at all of our high schools next year. This will be from before school until after school. That is what we're focusing on right now. We will be maximum staff during those peak hours, during those 30 to 45 minutes when you have students entering school. We'll have those entrances that they enter, bus, car rider, drivers staffed, and then after that peak hours, which our current policy and procedures state is we go down to one entrance, that main entrance, and so anyone who's coming in that main entrance will be asked to go through a metal detector as well, and we'll be staffing that with staff. We'll be using a combination of contracted and Richland School District II staff, and when I say Richland II, our plan is to put a Richland II staff member, a security officer, kind of being the captain in charge of each of those schools' screenings, and then we'll work with contracted staff. I should mention, this is all option A, and I'll get more into that in a minute, but we're thinking of other options if this option doesn't work out with staffing. As Mr. Sherman mentioned at your last meeting, staffing is the biggest issue, and it's going to require, it does require a lot of staff, and that's where we're trying to work on that right now. All staffing during the month of July, all those people working the staff will be properly trained, know how to, how to, how to screen people, what to look for, what to, what they can and can't do, what type, you know, wearing gloves, all that good stuff. We will have school staff there, not running to detect, not manning, working the detectors, as they have been, more as the administrative duties. So, kids are still entering school. Today, when kids enter school without a detect, without a metal screening, they're still administrative staff supervising kids. And so, if we have, we still need to address any discipline issues that come up, or any other issues that we need supervision of staff, so they'll still be there. And then our plan is to not forget about our middle schools and to use pop-ups as needed at middle schools. That's very high-level, but as I've mentioned to Ms. Nash before and to this group, the details will still be hammered out, and really more smaller details as we get closer to rolling this out for the first day of school in August. I've shared some of this before, but as we continue to massage these numbers and massage what it's going to take, as we've done 26 since February, these are kind of the, are still our estimates on the amount of staffing it takes during those peak hours, what those capital costs and staff costs. You've got asterisks by those because those are still variables, especially the staff cost. These are based on numbers from our current contract with Defender Services on what the hourly rate is for those staff. They have a minimum hourly rate, so you can't just hire them for one hour. There are minimums, but based on, on that. So, that's our current plan, and the current, the capital cost for the public and for you all here is a one-time cost. Now, there's obviously some as wear and tear, but that's traditionally a one-time, large upfront fee we'd put into our capital budget, a replacement cycle, on a year, on a different cycle to keep those up to date. It does include the hand wands as well, and then the staff cost is the recurring cost. Our plan is to, and we've already started that process with procurement, is issue an RFP, get a contract, a service contract with a security company. That way, we can spell out the scope of work and the needs of the district. So, familiar, very similar to a, our custodial contract, where we have a third party who does our custodial. We spell out the scope of work, we spell out the amount of custodians we need to leave school, very similar contract. Right now, our contract with Defender is more of a wide-range agreement that they provide security services as needed. So, one day they may, can provide five officers for a pop-up, the other day they may provide 10, but that's why we really want to make sure we have a more detailed contract. And the staffing is key. It's going to be something that really going to be difficult. Option B, if staffing does not come, if we're unable to, to get the amount of staffing we need, we've been working and have a discussion, talked with Dr. Miley and talked with the high school principals today, they'd be, they're, they're willing to, they understand that we don't need, we're all in agreement that it's not best to have our teachers and staff doing trained security functions. Their job is to teach students and provide that supervision and to provide that, that adult, caring adult for each of our kids. But, there are adults in the building that if we can potentially pay them a stipend to help during the peak hours, be it teaching assistant, coaches, the school staff, the principals would help us with that, that would be an option to get us through the hump while we continue to try to staff. You see 160 folks, a lot of people. There, there's not that many security staff sitting around, but, but we are going to work hard, as we've talked with some of our providers already, that we think this is, this is what's needed, and we think is doable. We do recommend for the school board and for Ms. Nash, Ms. McFadden, as y'all consider making the financial commitment to, to that cost, especially the reoccurring cost, that you also, we would recommend a policy to attach to this, so that, so that our public and everyone knows this. Our, we have, Mr. Claxton, we're still drafting what that language may be, and then we can give y'all the recommendation, and of course, it's your policy, but we would recommend that you all implement a policy with this as we, we do this daily. Lastly, just a quick timeline. As I said, we're working with procurement on purchasing metal detectors, wands, and a service contract with the vendor. Hopefully by June, have the vendor hired, hire five additional FTEs to manage the metal detectors, go through training and implementation of our policies and procedures, and then by the first day of school, be ready to roll. If for some reason throughout these next three months we run into some roadblocks, you know, we run into some issues with hiring, we'll continue to talk with you all about ways to make this work. It could be scale back the number of entryways. It could be a more phased approach. It could be we can do X, you know, can, a more robust pop-up. Our goal is what was mentioned, and I'm very, I'm optimistic that we can, we can hit that goal, but I, I just want to be, it's all hinges on staffing, and, and we all know the difficulties in staffing, so I don't want to come August and shock you all that we're not able to, but our plan is A, fully staffed, B, use school staff, C, a phased approach, and kind of tailor it as that way as we can, we can get fully staffed. That's just a quick summary for the Safety Committee and for the general public. We've been working on this for a long time, and I'm happy to be here, answer questions. Mr. Claxton, our principals are here, Captain Rhodes, who's, who's involved, and anything else, Ms. Nash. So, I'll turn it back over to you.
I'm going to open it up now for committee questions. Do you guys have any questions? Mr. Moody, you go ahead.
I guess, just a couple of things that I saw. When you, when you put costs up there, Spring Valley had five additional, and then I believe it was about 100, what is that? It's about $112,000 more, roughly. What's the reason, what is that? What's the difference in the other? Because it looks like all the others are the same.
It's just the different entry points? It's the different entry points. So, Spring Valley, and this is, these are estimates, and so as we continue to work through, we may determine that Blythewood, so when we talk today, for example, Blythewood may not have as many car riders or student drivers, and so they can manage one metal detector for those students. So, those are where the variant numbers is. Spring Valley, based on the amount of students, the amount of kids who enter the different entry points, to get them into, into the school effectively and efficiently would require that much. So, that's, that's the variant numbers on that.
Okay.
This is subject to change as we continue to work through. So, for example, if we, if we're getting pretty efficient, as kids learn this, then, you know, this, this may come down. I would say it would probably come down as opposed, you know, I'm optimistic it would come down, that we don't need this much staff as we continue, but I'd rather be conservative in a sense of, you know, overstaff on the front end, as opposed to not being fully staffed and having issue arise. So, let you know the high end, what we're thinking the cost may be, and then if we come in under, I think that would be, that would be better for us.
Follow-up to that, real quickly, is there, so, with the major issue being staffing, are there any conversations, understanding that there's a certain amount of training and a level of expertise that comes into this, is there cer, have there been any conversations about how to employ or how to utilize volunteers through this, whether it, you know, whether it be parent organizations or retired law enforcement or anything like that? Has there, has that been a conversation to try to keep one cost down, or to help take some of the pressure off of those staffing numbers?
That's a great suggestion. We, we haven't thought of that particular idea. I do know there's some, some issues with liability and different things, but, you know, I'd rather defer to your colleagues that are on here who know that particular part, whether Mr. Claxton or Captain Rhodes, anything y'all want to add about having volunteers do this, and y'all's opinion, doing this for so many, doing this for so many years?
That, there's some, some challenges doing it that way, and as you mentioned, the really primary one is the liability factor and a matter of control. We try to operate in a more controlled environment, and volunteers, although, you know, well-intended, may not necessarily function and operate as efficiently as we plan to operate these screenings. So, that may be a challenge.
I do think it's a good suggestion, though. I mean, there's something we need to look into further. So, I think that's a great suggestion. There could be some retired military or law enforcement that may be interested in doing that, and, but no, we'll, we can definitely reach out and see if we can have any success in that. And if you have any contact information, that'd be helpful, too.
And I could make another recommendation, too. It'd be great if those people, volunteer, can actually apply for a security substitute position. We're in desperate need for a, for security subs, so that may be an option as well.
Can you, can you hear me, Will? Question, I mean, not a question, but just to make another comment to the fact that I think students respond better to folks that they know, if they're familiar with them. If you get volunteers to come in, they're not familiar with them, and that'd be a great possibility, you know, they might be, may not be too cooperative, but it may be worth, worthwhile as far as maybe trying to volunteers and see how it works.
That's a good comment, and that's one reason why it's helpful to have some school staff there. They, they're a good smiling face, someone they know. So, obviously, they'll know us, our teams more as they're doing this daily, but having these principals and stuff there, it does seem to, to help ease concerns of kids of seeing faces they know, but I'd just add on to that.
Thank you for that, because that was actually a question that I get a lot, I was going to ask as well. So, I do have a question here from Ms. Rivers, who wasn't able to be here, and one of the questions she had, and I think we may have discussed it, but just so the public knows, will portable detect, metal detectors and handheld wands be used at school-wide events?
We currently do metal detectors at football games, basketball games, and other events as requested. We can, but that's just more, more cost. You know, we can, we can do as much as, 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 as the board would like us to do, and as we think is to do. I just know it's very difficult to, a high school especially, to make it like a, an airport terminal, where it's locked down constantly. And so, I'm not saying it's impossible, that's just a discussion we'd have to continue to have. So, can we continue to up, we can. It's possible now that we, our focus right now has been the 180 days, but for events, if that's something where we want to, and do, and I think it's not a bad idea, we can definitely start doing that. We just need to be prepared as a district and board to put those staffing costs into that.
Well, and then this is my question. So, the ones that, the events that we do now, I have a really loud voice, sorry. The ones that we do now, is that based on like the size of an event? Is it like, okay, hey, this event has this many people, so we're going to have, where there's a risk, or more of a risk? Is that how you guys kind of decide now?
Yes, ma'am. So, at all the football, we've, we determined years ago that we would do football and basketball varsity games, metal detectors. If there's going to be a crowd that, that is, that we anticipate a large crowd, then we'll do that. It, we've, we've talked about with the high school principals about doing it at all their events, and it comes back to staffing. What it ends up, ends up boiling down to is, is staffing. And so, this past, this past year, for example, when we changed our high school athletic policy regarding students and those under, I forget what age, that required more staff, school staff to help with the supervision, and more staff to help making sure to check IDs and stuff. So, again, we want to provide a safe environment, and, and, again, we can do these things, and we want to work this committee, but there, there are, there are costs to doing that. So, to answer your question, we determine that based on the need and based on if we can provide that service, and, and that's how we make that determination now. Is that right, Mr. Claxton?
Okay, so then the next question is, will all schools, elementary, middle, and high, receive metal detectors and handheld wands? And then what is, which we have the proposed rollout dates, so we don't have to answer that part, but, because I know we hear we're talking high schools, but what would be the plan? I think we talked a little bit about middle schools as well, but is there one, a plan for elementary at some point?
Right now, that's not in our plan. I have, we have done some analysis on what it would cost to do a high school, what it would cost to do middle, and what it would cost to elementary. And, you know, you just multiply our effect on, on those costs. At this point, the, the data that we have gotten from elementary schools, again, we, I want to be clear, we as a district will do what we think is in the best interest with the board and with this group. The data of weapons is not, does not support the need of, for, in our opinion, for metal detectors, based on us not recovering those, those types of things. The data from high schools supports us implementing that. Middle schools, we're still, still analyzing that need. So, as we've shown here, and as we've experienced, as you guys, the need now, it has definitely outweighed the cost, and so it's our need to do this, and we still have to do those cost and benefit analysis as we, as we roll into the next year. We, we can do that, it's just the same process of getting you guys to approve a staffing increase to the general fund budget, and then the capital cost increased. And then I think we'd have to really talk with our elementary and middle school families. That's, that's a different, as I have an elementary and middle school kid, there's a lot of age. Just, I mean, a five-year-old and an 18-year-old is a big difference in their brain functions and all that, so it, it's a lot that goes into that, and I think we need a further discussion on, on if we want to go that far right now.
And then, can you share the protocol for search and seizure?
Sorry, Todd just scared me behind me. I didn't see him sneaking behind me over here.
I saw that happening.
Search and procedure?
No, search and seizure is, what is the, is a protocol, like if you find something in a bag, what's that protocol look like?
Mr. Claxton?
That's a question from Mrs. Rivers.
Okay. Mr. Claxton, do you mind, since you've been there, done that?
Yeah. First, I don't want to call the search and seizure, because that's...
Sorry, that was the question that I got from the email.
But, yeah, what, what occurs is if there's some, some item or contraband discovered in the bag itself, the, the item is secured in the bag, and myself or the, the security managers, or the SRO assigned to the location will then secure it. If it's something that, that raises to a level of criminality, of course, we transfer that over to law enforcement, and they are responsible for processing that item and addressing the individual who possessed that item. So, it's a pretty straightforward process. You know, the, the screening process occurs, the individual's processing the items, and the individuals are observing, feeling bags, when possible, you know, for, for weapons, for, for contraband, and if something is found, then we go about the, a chain of custody that doesn't preclude a successful prosecution if necessary, if that answers it.
We'd also, we have, so what happens is, is if the, if the alarm goes off, you go to a secondary screening. And so, that's where we have more highly-trained folks who will then search bags, and you will get a wand. And then if, if that is discovered, it's, it's discreet as possible not to cause any type of panic or to cause anything. So, in some of our schools, there's, there's nearby offices or things, but Mr. Claxton or whoever it may be would, would radio or call admin slash SROs to assist in whatever the situation may be. But, again, we want to do it safely. We want to make sure that we're not causing a panic or a scene, and so it's done in a way that's the protection of, of everyone there, and the protection of, of the, of the officer, and the protection of the individual who may have done that. So, they do a good job, but again, these are, Mr. Claxton's a trained officer, and so that's why it's important to have these, these people at these stations.
And then, this is a question, a my, me question. So, because we're talking about high schools right now, the protocol that we're going to follow for this, all high schools will follow, and that's just for the public to know.
Yeah, it'll be systematic across, I mean, the entrances, obviously, each high school's unique. You know, we talked about this today with the principals, they, some have multiple doors and different entrances, and they're all unique. The policy, procedure for how it is, is the same, just the entrances and where they come would be different. So, and that's why we want to make sure we have a Richland II staff manage each one, not let the principals be the necessarily manager of that. So, it's, it's systematic across, I can go to any school, and I know what to expect when I get to any school. I just may be walking in a different door.
And then, this is from Ms. Green Rivers. Will all staff, along with students, parents, and volunteers, go through metal detectors daily?
Yes, during our pop-ups right now, we do require everybody to go through that. So, that's, you know, we would, we would ask everyone to go through that, through the, through the screenings, yes, ma'am.
And then, I think we've already talked about, one question you've already answered here. Okay, so, and now, this is a really good question. What will messaging for students, parents, and community regarding metal detectors rollout be in a timeline? And if there's something that you, you know, would like the committee to do as well, or recommendations of how we handle that, then we, we're open to that as well.
I believe, we'll, I think, working with the committee, working with Mr. Turquetta's office to help us with the rollout. I don't know if he wants to speak now, but I, the biggest thing is we want to provide a, a safe environment for our kids, and for our staff, and for those in the buildings. And, you know, the message right now, off the top of my head, is we're going to do that, but Mr. Turquetta is much more well-spoken than I am, so he'll help us with that.
Greg, Mr. Turquetta, would you like to speak to that for us?
Briefly, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Obviously, the details of what we've spoken about tonight and how the plan rolls out will dictate what the communication campaign would be, but it's not something we need a lot of turnaround time on. For instance, the superintendent search timeline we got this morning, it was a one-day turnaround, and it's fully messaged. So, we'll, we'll build a plan this summer, as Will dials in the plan, and we'll be ready to go.
Perfect. Ms. McFadden?
I do have a question. So, I was just thinking, are these metal detectors going to be set up in such a way that, right now, if I go to a school, I can't get into the building without going through the door, and if the door is locked, I can't get in? Are the metal detectors going to be set up in such a way that I'm not going to be able to get through the door, or are they set up on the inside of the door?
The de, the details for the, the, during the day, we still need to work out. I mean, they would be in that secure vestibule, so that before they actually enter the building per se, they've been screened, so they would not be able to get into the rest of the school. As you can see from some of the images here, they're a little different, based on the school for the, for the entrance during the school day, because we've got so many staff there, we've got these larger areas, areas to funnel students through. We still need to work out those details, but my, my thought is, for example, in every school, we have a secure vestibule, that they enter the vestibule, behind a bullet-resistant glass is our receptionist, but our staff who are manning the, the metal detector would help that person go through that detector. But again, those are just, we need to work out those details. But we'll, once we know, we'll be part of working the plan, like when you come to the school, expect to do this and that.
And I guess we should think about weather, because if it's pouring down rain outside, you know, we probably need to consider how we're going to do that. I think it's a great idea, and I'm absolutely for it, but I think we should take some of that into consideration when we're working that out.
No, we definitely thought, that's a good suggestion. We've, we've tried to place these in locations that we could do them, but as you can see in the one image, they're clearly... clearly in the weather. So we have to continue to work with our schools on those rain plans. And continue to fun, funnel, flush out some of these, these details. But again, we, our team, the schools, they're really good at being adaptable and flexible. And I think we can, end of the day, we'll, we'll make sure that, that kids are, are safe and going through a way to check them, check them and the, and the other people coming to the building before they enter.
And as we keep going, I keep thinking, so are these metal detectors going to be mobile? Will we can move them around? Or are they going to be permanent? When you walk in, this is what it is? At every school, it's going to be like concrete to concrete?
They're, they're mobile. That gives us flexibility. And so that way, you know, they're not stuck in the weather. Or that hallway that you see there is used for a different hallway during the day. And so that's, they'll, they'll move in and out as we need to. So they're, they, they, they will not be a permanent, thick structure. Now, as, as we continue to develop, as technology advances, as different things, we may change the technology. But next year, the open gate technology that, that you see in the images is, is what we plan on doing. They're very lightweight. I don't think we've shown this Nash, but I don't, that might be, we should, sorry, we probably should have brought a pair today. I didn't think about it, and that would have been helpful. But we can, we're happy to do that at the next meeting. And as I've mentioned before, I'm happy to share with you all the dates of our upcoming ones, so you can see them firsthand.
Okay. And then I have one last question. And that is, and I know that we've talked about this before, but this is a question that came through from email from Ms. Rivers. How accurate, I think we may have talked about it in the first one, but how accurate are metal detectors with scanning high-volume traffic?
These things are pretty good. I mean, I, I, Mr. Claxton, go if he wants to go more. But you'll be, you'll be surprised how good they've been. I mean, we've, I want to get into specifics, but we found some things that I don't think kids thought we would find. Mark, do you have, want to add anything?
Yeah. And it's important to keep in mind that we, in addition to calibrating every time we, we use these things, there are settings and sensitivity settings. And then we get some feedback information on the level of sensitivity, et cetera. So it, the purpose, the beautiful thing about these open gates is that you really can, can screen high-volume traffic in short period of time. But yes, we have the ability to really to, to lock in as far as sensitivity is concerned. And it's, it's user-friendly. It's pretty much plug-and-play. Even I figured it out. So it's pretty good.
And as you can see, the things I mentioned earlier, we found, I mean, some of these are small items that, they're, and, and then larger items that are, that are setting it off. And so we feel pretty, we feel, we feel very confident these, these things work pretty well.
Anyone else have any questions? I think we've kind of gone through the questions pretty quickly. Any comments from the committee?
Mrs. Nash?
Oh, yes. Dr. Scott's on the phone. I forgot, because it was so, she didn't say anything earlier. Hi, Dr. Scott. Dr. Scott?
Hello. How's everyone? I like everything that everyone has actually shared. I think that's great information. I think our public will begin to have that trust in us that we are taking safety and security very seriously. Mr. Anderson, thank you guys so much for that information. My only question is, I truly want us to emphasize that teachers will not have to man any of our metal detectors, because I think that's still worse in the community, that people truly believe that that's what we're going to do, as well as just a few conversations that I've had with teachers over the last week, being very fearful that they will be asked to do that. So whatever we can do, I just want it to be, it's possible that we do not use teachers or put that additional fear in them, because we don't want them having that fear. And they can't educate our students, because they are all worked up, because they're thinking that they have to go and now pull weapons from students and check book bags. So I don't want that image out there that we have any inclination that we will be using teachers. So whatever we have to do on the board to find the money and to hire the staff, I think that's what we need to start working on.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Moody?
Just, we were talking a while ago about kind of thinking forward. And the plan right now in the short term is high schools, pop-ups at middle schools. And, and I would suggest, kind of thinking forward, we got a lot of really good information from Mr. Sherman in our last meeting regarding that. And I would think, starting now, the process of talking with middle school and elementary school principals and teachers, their needs are going to be very, very different than, than what the high school, we, we talked about that. But I, I think you may have some elementary school principals that come back and say, hey, this money can be better served doing this, this, or this, Plan A, B, or C. And having, having that information now to prepare for it, you know, in kind of Phase Two or Phase Three, I think would probably be really beneficial.
Yes, sir.
Any more question, any more questions or comments? Okay. Well, that being all...
So I was just going to say, so Ms., so that's our plan. We hope that you, as a committee, will support the plan now. And we're bringing that back to your whole board to approve the plan so that we can, so we can have the funding to make sure we can get the staff we need. So that's, that would just be my recommendation. And then at some meeting before we go full speed, that, that we get you guys a policy. So as the, that's the staff's recommendation to the committee to take to the school, the entire board.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Anderson, can you send the board members this PowerPoint presentation, please?
Sure. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, if there is no more business, thank you guys so much for being here this afternoon. And if I could, have a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair?
Ms. McFadden?
I move that we adjourn the Tuesday, May 2, 2023, Safety Committee meeting.
Do I have all the yeses?
Yes, for me.
Okay. And any noes? All right. Then this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott.